This is a special meeting of mayor and council and notice was given as follows. One, notice was filed June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the record and door of style ledger, both official newspapers of the borough. Two, notice was posted on the bulletin board and three copies preserved in the clerk's office. Right, the pledge of allegiance will be led by our council person.
Jane?
Yes?
Ken?
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, from the men, people, the outside, I can't see anything. And Mr. Park and Mr. Park said he sensed some concerns.
Can I get a motion to accept, uh, the address of, uh, council president, Mr. Park? Islamic motion.
Second. Home paper?
Bye.
Jayara?
Here.
Petrie?
Yeah.
Great, um, third of town, we have Jenny, Jenny Boxer today, from the street.
Here.
And often said building conditions.
So we have one item on agenda, um.
Yeah, so, so as you all know, we've been working on the building, uh, it has been, uh, going back, I guess, around six or seven months now, a condition mold which first started in the police locker room. Once that condition was observed and identified, we called in a company to do testing to find extent of it. Uh, upon testing, determined that there was a mold condition down there inside the walls, behind walls, ceilings, so on and so forth, under carpeting, all basically condition conditions. They started performing additional testing throughout the building and a condition spread. And as of this point, there are, I think, four, four reports back, or maybe more, five reports back. Uh, they're not done yet. So the company who's doing the, the testing is not a remediation company. They just simply do the testing and determine what is there and then what would need to be done. Uh, so, so that's going on. Where we are right now is that there is mold in more places than not in the building. Uh, our office, so let me say our office, the administrator's office, the house, the clerk, and the deputy administrator, director of DTW, has been deemed as one of the worst sites. So we're in storage office next door, which is the old pool. Uh, the court office has relocated to Fairview and is working at the Fairview facility because that office was deemed pretty bad too. We don't know what the extent is at this point in the police station. The concern I have and that you guys should have is, at some point, when the reports are finalized and come back, when the remediation plan comes back, there will be a need to start something. Whether that's to vacate the building and clean it, vacate the building and make repairs, shut half the building down or portion the building down, I don't know, that would be up to you guys. Or not do anything at all and move to a different facility. So that's a decision you guys will have to make.
May I ask you?
Hold on a minute. So, so until we get to that crossroad, we are going to have to, we can't spend money that we don't have, you all know that, right? So we're gonna have to appropriate a bond, or determination to appropriate a bond or not. Uh, I think the bonds are being the amount of three million dollars. You're gonna have to use it. You don't have to touch it, you don't have to do anything. And we have the money there. So when you are getting bills for architects or lawyers or cleaning companies or whatever the process is, they have to call a little more for, you'll have money to pay for it. We all know that you can't spend money that you don't have. You can't appropriate money that you, that was not in the budget, right? None of this was ever budgeted for. So that would be a recommendation. And then what you would have to think about later on is what you want to do with the facility. Do you want to fix it? Do you want to vacate it? Do you want to move forward? Not, whatever the case is. Whatever you guys want to do, we'll put the, we'll send motion to get you there. Um, anybody has any questions?
Yes, uh, you said he was found in about six, seven months ago.
The first condition was reported about six, seven months ago.
And how, why did you do an immediate remedy for that?
So as soon as it was found in, in the ceiling of the police locker room, we called in the professionals to take it from there.
And then didn't do anything?
Yes, we called in the professionals to take it from there. And that's what we're doing right now. They've been, they've been doing their evaluation.
So you said, uh, this company is not a remedial job. They're doing, they're just doing the investigation and research about the roots of the problem and what will happen, they're keep on investigating.
Correct. I'm not an environmental engineer, nor is anybody on the council that I know of. So we called in professionals to determine what type of mold it is, if in fact it is mold, contagious mold. They have the worst types of sampling and testing.
So if we ever clean it up and, uh, do some kind of a remedial job immediately, that will harm in the long run?
I don't know who answered to that.
So as a, as a council person, I believe when there is a problem occurs, the first reaction or first thing that we have to do is take care of the situation.
You did.
So, uh, I wish, and then that was kept on spreading like?
No, that's not true. So the first part, spot that was identified?
And you could have probably done some kind of a preventive, uh, action as well, you know?
Well, what would your recommendation have been if we didn't know where it was? What would have prevented that?
Because I kind of felt that like, oh, we spent a little too much time, that we could have done something.
That's not true. Again, you're not, you're not correct. So immediately when it brought to our attention through a complaint, immediately we called in a company to do it. So quicker than immediate, I don't know what it is. And again, we brought a professional in. Because if you have mold experience, or you have mold experience, or you have mold experience, then maybe you can help us. Because I don't have mold experience, nor would I ever put somebody's life or the borough in danger, right? So we have to find out where?
Right now, are we in safe?
So right now, we're waiting for the balance of the reports. Our health official says we're not. That's her opinion, she's a professional. I'm not a health professional, I'm not an engineer.
So she feels that it's, it's okay.
Well, that's her opinion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to rely on the reports as they're coming back. The reports seem to differ a little bit. And once they're completely comprehensive of the entire building?
Yes.
Because each individual piece will be looked at separately. They're gonna look at it as one titled complete piece in a complete package. And then they'll make a determination as to what type of evaluation and, and the remediation has to be done.
I see, okay. I understand, but you know, I wish that we could have done something immediately.
And to that point, what would that, what would you have done immediately? What would you have done faster than we did it?
You know, we could click, um, bring in the professional to clean up and?
Clean what up? You don't know what we were cleaning up.
That's, that's backwards, okay?
I am in that business and, and I do have a lot of experience now because we waited too long.
No, no, we didn't wait too long again. We didn't wait too long. Immediately when it was found and brought to our attention, we made a determination.
It said it was seven months ago.
It's been seven months since we've been working on process, that's correct. That's how long it needs to take, okay? So that area is not being occupied. The health official said it's not harmful for those people to go in and out of that area. That's her opinion. She's a professional, she has the certification. We did act immediately. So to say we didn't act immediately are a hundred percent wrong.
All right, then, uh, is there any possibility that after all those reports are coming, then you can bring in the cleaning company?
So again, like I, like I said earlier?
Yeah.
Once the reports are done, then they will make an evaluation. And then based on their full reports for the entire building, they will determine a remedial plan. And that plan then will have to go out to bid to a host of different companies, whoever does this work.
Right.
And then they're gonna come back and say, okay, this building needs to be this.
Right.
My, my fear is, and the reason why I'm saying we need to do a bond, is we have to be ready for that. To your point, you have to act fast, right? So if we don't do this and we get the reports back?
As you said, we don't have enough money on this.
And now we have, and now we have a plan, what has to be done?
Yeah.
And we go the rate of the parking program, which we wait here. You're actually at that point when you know what the bacteria is and the molds are, you could be putting people's lives in danger. And I'm certainly not gonna take the responsibility for that. If you guys want to do it, that's fine.
I know, so when the report comes, we're gonna do the immediate?
When, when, when the, when the balance of the reports come in.
Fast to be, you know, resolution, okay?
And to that point, I think, Mr. DeVito here, Rob, you, you do give us a quick update on, on, uh, the balance of the reports? I think it's a week or so?
So yeah, most of the, uh, reports, I mean, coming back, I have to actually email you today, a few more that came in.
And then, uh, he's going to hopefully in the next week or two, once all the samplings are back,
he will write us a remediation plan, which will say, this has to be removed, that wall has to be taken down, this wall has to be taken down, ceiling tile, whatever it is, it's gonna be spelled out. And that's when a remediation company will have to be brought in because we've had three.
I'm curious, Rob, you're talking about, this is an environmental guy?
So this is a guy that?
So he's gonna give you a remediation plan for the mold?
For the mold and?
What is the plan for the correction of what the issue is prior to the remediation?
Also?
Because I do building after building with many, many mold problems. And the basic fact is, no matter what you think you're gonna remediate, if you don't correct the issue, you are throwing money in the toilet, you are not protecting anyone. But yes, it looks great to everybody on the outside, like you brought in a remediator and he took a wall down and he cleaned out that mold, but it's useless when in fact you find out there's a penetration somewhere that will continue to eventually regrow that mold. So I feel like there's, there's something here that's a little backwards. Are we equally coming up with a plan for correction at the same time?
So let me answer this, Rob, hold on, hold on. So two-fold. One, we will have a remedial, remediation plan to get rid of the mold. That doesn't stop the underlying causes of why it's happening.
So, so what's the point?
Why it's happening is because it's a building that's built many, many years ago. And windows need to be replaced, roof needs to be replaced, floor coverings are outdated, they don't like floor coverings anymore, carpet. So there are a host of major improvements that should be done to see that this doesn't happen. That's gonna be a decision that the government bodies can make as to whether or not you want to take those on. That is like a whole nother thing. So once we get the?
But you're going opposite. You need to have an engineer who's doing destructive testing?
And again, the reason for the?
And telling us where the problems lie and what it will cost us and what we have to do to correct the problems.
So to your point, we had the borough and architect for a plan. Now, he can only go so far before he has to get paid, right? Again, we need the bond to be in place. So Eddie O'Carroll, who's the borough's architect, who's appointed every year, came in, walked the building and says, time out, we have major problems here. And the underlying causes is an old building needs to be renovated. But at what point do you start, what point do you stop, okay? So he's gonna say, here's a remediation plan, we can get a price on that. But to do the major improvements, we're now gonna have to say, we wanna do a roof, we wanna do windows, we wanna do whatever else needs to be done, HVAC upgrades. And then all of that stuff would stop the water infiltrations and penetration and air gaps and everything coming in to do that. But we have to now expend resources to get to that point.
And just to get an idea, when was this built?
Oh, I don't know, sixty-four.
Was it early sixties?
Yeah, sixty-four, I think sixty-seven, sixty-three.
And there was no touch of work and you've renovation after that?
There's been no major upgrades to this building since that time. Basic repair.
So I, I have a problem, Mr. Mayor, but to me, we're sitting here, we're gonna be making decisions on a plan that seems to me very hard for me to sit here and make. I a hundred percent know that I've been in many situations where people were sick from the mold. It happens, it's a fact. If it's airborne, it could be in one area of the building, but through your filtration system, through your air system, it's spreading. Um, putting anybody at risk, I don't, I don't want, I don't want even to think about that. So I feel like the council needs to deal with that. And then from there, I think it becomes a whole nother subject of, what do we need to do to fix the building to remediate the mold situation? That's the order it goes in. As, as a professional, just not a council person.
You're not, you're not right.
That's the order. I don't think there's anybody here who's gonna sit here. If we're gonna sit here and vote on what the order is, not that, because I, I actually know what the order is. We better make a decision what we're gonna do to protect the borough employees first. I have a really hard time coming in here and I go upstairs and I see Gina in the very room that the health official has said is definitely contaminated.
No, no, that was, we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten that yet.
But it's what, your office and that office is one office, please. With semantics?
No, 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 we're not there anymore, we're next door and it's still?
But she wasn't. I came here last week and she's in that office making copies on the copyer. That does not make me feel comfortable.
I have to agree with you.
And Gina, I'm not trying to interfere in your business, but just from the standpoint as an official, I feel I have a responsibility to make sure Gina Kim isn't sick from this. And why is she in there? Okay, so I think what the council needs to think about is, Mr. Mayor, is first and foremost, making sure everybody's okay and having the safety factor. What do we need to do? What will it cost us to do it? Is it a matter of putting trailers on a property and, and moving everybody? Do we need to rent a space? That, that is what we should be looking at. And then at that point, when that is accomplished, then we figure out what is wrong with this building and is it gonna be cost effective? Can Palisade Park fix this building? Can the taxpayers fix the building? Get rid of the building? Fix a roof, do whatever the professionals are gonna tell us is needed. And then you're able to fix your mold. But until that happens, I, I will never sit here and vote to spend maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars. I've seen tiny little areas cost twenty, thirty thousand dollars to remediate and still have the same exact issue. And then we're looking to put another bandaid and spend another several hundred thousands of dollars. So at this point, I feel, and this is my opinion, the rest can speak for themselves, I feel that that needs to be the order of business here and what we need to do first and foremost to find out how we're gonna keep the people in this building, the employees protected.
So, so to your point, the reason for my calling this or having you guys call this meeting is so we can put a bond in place, whether we need it or not, to get those professionals on board to give us an analysis, an determination, and a game plan as to where we're going from here.
Do you have any estimates of any of that?
We do. So we do. So the architect has done a, a, uh, estimate of, of, you know, a roof is, is a half a million dollars.
No, I mean for the professionals. The cost we're talking about?
I have a duty to pay in hiring them there. Uh, it would be an architect and it would be some type of an environmental guy.
An engineer.
Yeah, uh, so we can have the borough engineer spearhead that and bring in somebody. Uh, and then you could have the architect, have one or two of his staff people work on that. So that would be hourly rates of, of somewhere around a hundred fifty dollars an hour for as many hours as needed. But again, we can't just fire people without having something in place to find them.
I just don't report, we cannot even take the proper, like, enough?
We don't know what it's gonna be yet, right? So they're telling us it's bad, or it's good, or it's not that bad.
So today, we're going to, uh?
All we wanna do today is put a bond in place to maybe do nothing, maybe never spend a penny. It's up to you guys. But to have the resources there, that we can get a couple of the borough professionals on board. So we could pay them because it's not in the budget. And then they can do an evaluation for us and say, hey, your building is not worth fixing anymore. Or we can fix this and here's the cost of it's gonna be and here's the remediation plan. And after you're remedying it, you do a roof, you do windows, you're pretty good shape, or not.
Then I'd like to suggest that we need to hire this professional that I have.
I agree with you.
But issuing the bond, we can wait. We can, we can know what they're going to say.
How are you gonna wait these people?
We've waited in the fist for parking ordinance to look where we are. We need the bond tonight.
No, I just?
I don't have to use it.
But Dave, I, I, I agree, we need the bond, uh, but I, I, and you are addressing the fact that we need to hire the professionals. I'm a hundred percent. But I still don't hear the employee safety issue. And I still walked in here less than a week ago and saw Gina in that office making copies.
So, so Cindy, here's, here's what happened.
Well, are you including that, the relocation?
So here's, so here's what happened. You should say, oh, once, once the, um, once the, um, uh, reports are finalized and we have an remediation plan, at that point, we'll know exactly. My guess is we're gonna have to get out of the building.
Well, we need to move the court to Fairview.
Because it, it was beyond?
Right, and then, and that says it all to me.
Hold on a second. Chris, can you tell what the guy told you when he came in?
Uh, he suggests we, one of, uh, Serena was eating yogurt and he said, I suggest you do not eat in here. I suggest you don't even work in here. So we have shared services with Fannie, so that's, we've been in for a month.
So, a, and that says it all. Because that doesn't speak for the one room. I, I am really going to be clear about this. That does not speak for that.
Well, I can tell you right now, I don't choke anymore since I'm in Fannie.
And you were coughing, apparently.
So my, and everybody's gonna go, so, so my, so my, uh, my urgency is that, do we need the bond? Maybe, maybe not. But my, my, my gut tells me for having some construction experience is that once this report comes back and summarized together with an evaluation, they're gonna say, get out of the building. And get to work.
I agree.
And we're gonna need temporary services. And we already started looking around for temporary services as, as a stockpile. I, I don't know if we need them or not. Maybe it's trailers. But whatever it is, something's gotta be done. You can't just sit here and wish it away.
Let's talk about the bond a little bit. Questions, uh, if we apply for a bond, a bond as we speak right today, how does it take for us to receive?
Uh, that's the C F, again, takes time.
A, a whole part figure?
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. Now, secondly, if we had a specific bond, we could only use it for specific reasons, we asked for. Can't move that bond like to someone else.
Hopefully we'll, we'll use it. Hopefully we'll, we'll determine it.
So that bond is only for the remedy of the mold, correct?
How much of that report is for the building? That's all of it? You're still waiting for?
These, these seven reports reached?
No, what percentage is that right there? Do you still wait over twenty percent more?
Not seventy-five percent. It's almost done, yeah. Yeah. I think there's, there's two or three more, Rob, that came in.
Yeah, two or three more.
So that bond doesn't put Palisade Park at any risk. It's there for the protection of moving as fast as we can with whatever we need to do once we know all the facts.
Trailers, vacate the building, temporary services?
Hiring professionals to assess how we need to?
Remediation.
And however long, that's not a, that's not a two-minute process, by the way.
That's why?
It's not as if somebody's gonna come in here and say, you're gonna completely gut the bill. That doesn't happen like that. It takes a lot of, yeah, it could be here for now. It could be here.
So we may be homeless in, in, in essence, for here or to do things in here, I don't know.
I think we need to secure money, to protect the employees here and to put into place a plan to take corrective action. I, I don't really see how there's any hesitation here. This isn't really about anything but that. And I know I like to lay down and I close my eyes and feel like we've done the right thing for, for our people and for the people that work here, for sure. So my recommendation is to move forward with the bond.
Hey, I have a question. In reference to the health of the employees, we have the board of health who's telling us, advising us health-wise, that our employees can still work in this building, am I correct or am I wrong?
In some areas.
Yeah, I mean, the areas that were not, that they're not, they haven't been working in there, they're wrapped. But she, the board of health is the one that's advising us as far as keeping people safe.
So once, so once, Mike, so once the final reports come back, um, and then she has a compilation of all those reports, then she'll make a determination as to, you know, where she sees it overall. Maybe her mind changes, maybe it doesn't. Maybe they say, you know, my concern is, the systems that are in the building are all the air conditioning system, right? So if you isolate one office, for example, my office, we're gonna gut it in my office, and you put plastic down. And you're running gas to your heat, whatever the temperature is, you're still circulating dirty air, right? Now, we also found that there's some contamination in the air systems themselves. Not that everyone doesn't have something like that, but, okay, what level it's at, we'll find out. So does it mean that you have to disconnect those units? I don't know, right? So to make that determination certainly way beyond my capacity to do.
What, what are the certifications from the health department that makes, and I, I'm not, this has nothing to do with Bronca, but I have to tell you, I, I need to know, how does she determine that? What are the certifications there for that determination? Because whenever I have a building with the mold issue, I have to have a professional with certain certifications who looks at those reports and knows exactly what the level should be and the percentage, because it's a serious decision. That comes back to you as people become ill. So you don't know. Well, can I somehow try to get that information?
We should invite them to our regular meeting next, next week.
That's probably a good idea.
Give us an explanation as to what's going on in the condition of the building.
Maybe we should ask the professionals.
If we have all the reports back by next week, I'm sure this gentleman will have no problem coming in and giving a, an overall evaluation. Maybe that should be a closed session.
She can come?
Yes.
Everybody got your reports?
They called everybody Bronca?
Yeah, sure.
Are those for us?
You have to email them.
A hard copy?
If you want.
I'd like a hard copy.
We'll email them.
You have a hard copy on the floor, I can. If you have.
Yeah, there's. Give it to us. That's up to you.
Thank you.
I, I mean, I have talked, even if I don't, so. And that's where we are, but I still have to.
So are we looking to make a motion today about at least the bonding? Council, poll, Mike?
Yes.
Can I get a motion? So can I, can I get a motion?
I'm making a motion.
We should, we should.
Watch three minutes.
I second that motion.
Bronco? Bronco?
Jane?
No, I think we need to take, take some more time.
Sarah?
Yeah, issuing the bond is, like, I, I agree with the hiring professionals for that, yeah.
I think that it is, it is impossible not to use money if we need it the most right now. No matter what it is, remediation, we don't have any budget, we have to move to a new location, buy a, whatever, if you have to move to a different location or whatnot, we still need the finance. And I do assume that we need the money in order to protect our employees ASAP. So I say yes.
Jayara?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passes three million, Paul, we, okay, it's a motion by the CFO and Steve.
Guys, I'll contact them tomorrow, you're ready.
And can you contact them as Chris said, have them at our next meeting in a closed session? Because I wanna study this report and then I, I wanna come back with many questions, I'm sure. And, um, Rob, you said about two weeks. Can we try to press on that to get the rest of this tested? Because if we're gonna get this bond in a few weeks, we need to begin to start to really look at this seriously.
The problem is not so much him, but the labs that they send.
Yeah, it takes a lot of time, sometimes for them to grow. They have to grow the tests, yeah.
Why is it three million dollars? Why not five, why not one?
Because I, I think at some point, you're gonna have to make a bigger determination.
What? I think so too.
We need to just get?
I mean, all I wonder is that three million dollars, I'm within here, you're kinda like saying, you should have a safety measure around this amount.
Yeah, I mean, at, at some point, you're gonna have to make a bigger decision.
But you at least you'll have another moment to hire a professional.
I don't know what is enough, is that's my question.
Right, no, probably at the end of the day, when we figure out what it is. I don't think it'll be nearly enough, but that's for the future. As Dave said, it could take a year before you even determine how you're going to rectify it.
Just one second, just verifying something real quick.
No, 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 it's not on, it's not on.
No, 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 we'll, we'll?
No, 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 no. This is a whole other report.
Four, lots of them.
This is the report.
Each one is for a different section of the health. Yeah, there's more, so.
I wanna talk about, I wanna see the results, and then ask the microphones. Yep, and then after you, we ask the? I can ask you. There's no way. That's a case. We can't, you know? I don't get it, but I've seen, I think, I saw. I know, it's not good. It's not good. We good? But as she said, the whole day is so tedious.
While we wait for the answer, can we move on to the, uh, council reports?
Um, now we'll discuss the meeting next week.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a regulation for any school? Nice, I guess. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so for the record, it was just to authorize three million dollar bond for mold remediation.
What matters is related mold remediation. All, any, all matters related to mold remediation.
Okay, I think what's the board reports, you may really, might, from the other committee, who's gonna be directly involved with watching the dollars, seeing what the steps are. I think they're gonna be incredibly important to the public, going forward.
Can I get a motion to open to the public at this time?
Make a motion? I'll second it.
On the table?
All right.
Need to put out the public like there is, is there?
Uh, I would just make a suggestion, I know Stephanie's gonna make it because it's wasted paper, that the reports, it was really, copies being made for everyone, so everyone on this panel is kept up to date as to what's going on. So no one can come and say they don't know.
Washington, everyone's been emailing the copy reports.
Huh?
Everyone's been emailing every copy report.
Oh, they have?
They, they received the emails, yes.
I, I asked specifically because I want you to?
Say, I'm asking for two, I'm, I'm?
I would say though, I think, she's in May, half actively, in for residence because the people are starting to chug conclusions and are not completed yet. Once you have the entire report.
That's overweight, and, and it takes time, I guess. Anyone else? Yes?
Uh, so you said there was?
Uh, so you said the report will be probably finalized in one or two weeks, that's great. And so then we can also access the report. Who is the contact that does the investigation? Now, I'm right on.
Yeah, do you reset?
Take again, can we look?
No, N O R M I. N O R M I.
N O R M I?
Yeah, from how wanted your.
Yeah, the names were given to us from the health department. The names were given to us to use for the health department. So this sort of one list.
Inspector is Henry Scheyer, S C H E Y E R.
Mark, I have another question. So, so we talking three million dollar bond, right? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you don't have any rationale. Why you come up to three million?
Don't have any what?
Rational. Any justification?
That's not true, Paul. That's absolutely not true. You just need the rationale.
Well, you know, it's a very vague and abstract level.
No, 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 that's not true. Had you been listening, we said, professionals, possible relocation, cleaning, remediation. We have no idea what it's gonna cost. And as you know, as a, as a finance professional, when you put a bond in place on a municipal end, you don't have to spend it. It's enough to exceed amounts, right? So the money is there, like a savings account, you don't have to spend it. And if you don't spend it, it's only for one cause. So if we only spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars, the rest doesn't get spent and we don't pay interest on it.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say is, like, you know, the councilman Paul, he says, why not one million? Why not five million? You must have some kind of justification process.
It may very well be that.
That money, right?
So, so if we bid one million, we'd have to come back and do it again and then again.
Yeah, I mean, it's okay, right?
Why not twenty-five million?
Well, if, if you, you, we have, say, we have a three million dollar, that's not enough, you're gonna have another one anyway, right?
That's correct. It may very well be the same.
So, so, but at least, what I'm trying to say is, as a professional, you know, you guys doing this is not the first time, I bet. And you've most have some kind of process and procedure so that you can justify why this is three million dollars, it's the right thing for here, right?
Yeah.
And that's not what I'm hearing. That's why it actually disturbing me.
Okay.
That you just, uh, charge three million.
There is, I don't know, whatever the E D A, that was my question, is that, is that. What he asked her, what he asked me is that we could start now. Hey, if we need more or less, we're gonna, we're gonna justify it, right? What happens if so much three million dollars, eight million dollars, what's gonna happen, do we respond again or what? Capital improvement, so I'm gonna be there. You guys on the side, right?
I have the.
So three million dollars are definitely, if we need more, we could ask for more.
And if you don't need, you won't.
If we don't need it, we don't spend it, we'll be, we'll be giving back. And that money could only be spent on this specific issue, right?
Yeah, understood, understood, okay, but I, I, I'm just a little bit disturbed because of.
What is disturbing about this? I, I really wanna justify this, right? But what could possibly disturb you about that, when we in fact said it may not be spent? But at least we have the money in, in place in case we do, what if they turn around and say, you better move everybody out of this building tomorrow? We, do we need to come back to the table and tell all the people? I talked, you said something, and I'm trying to justify the reason behind. That's what you wanna know. You're saying you're uncomfortable and you wanna justify it. I'm justifying it. I'm telling you the reason behind three million dollars. I'm, you're, you're asking us what justifies, you're very uncomfortable. I want you to sleep tonight over this three million.
I'm trying to say, why, why is it disturbing me? Like in the, you know, budget, you guys have put all kinds of items, so then it's.
What does it have to do with this? They have all kinds of finances.
We're able to regulate, right?
Hold on a second.
You have a report.
There's no line in the budget that assesses or sets. Sorry, listen, I, I listened to you, you can listen to me.
I didn't finish my state.
There's no line in the budget that assesses emergency situation.
Let us register and speak and let us listen to her first. Please!
Calm down.
She says she's not finished.
Yes, I have to say, move on. Anybody else in the public?
Second.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, we knew they stopped.